Okay. Well, welcome. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see all your smiling faces. And so, welcome to the August the 6th, 2016 General Regular City Council Meeting. And would you call the roll, please?
I would be happy to. Councilmember Cochran?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilmember Hemrick?
Here.
Councilmember Hacquez?
Here.
Councilmember Meisner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Troutman?
Here.
All present.
Okay, thank you. Is Alicia Swearingen here? Alicia, would you please rise for the opening prayer?
Our heavenly Father, we just are so grateful for our city and all those that serve here in our city. Lord, thank you for your favor in this community, and we just pray for more of that. Give us wisdom as we meet today to have discussions about the benefit of our city and what's best for our city, and we just commit this time to you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the first fifteen minutes of our meeting, we usually hold open to anyone that would like to just come and talk to the council. And you've got three minutes. And I think we have Louise, would you like to approach and give us your name and what you'd like to tell us about? And we'll start the timer. When three minutes is up, there's a hole, the door that dropped, you dropped down.
Well, then, they'll probably fall through.
Sorry. Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, my name's Louise Barton. I'm here about Lakeside Cemetery. I am needing approval from this council to consider, or consider, to complete my application with the Fremont County Heritage Committee to make it a landmark, historic landmark. There is no cost to the city for anything. It is a title only.
Was, is there anything regarding what we would have to do? Or is it a plaque? What?
There's a plaque that we, you would get, but other than that, there's nothing.
Where would you contemplate that being?
I was thinking by the three flags by the military.
Okay.
So, I need a letter from the city citing, it gives me approval to submit my application to the Fremont County Heritage Committee to complete this.
Any questions, the council? Or Tony, would you like, can you comment on that?
We could draft a letter for council's consideration approval on August the 20th. Would that be sufficient for your deadline?
I'm sorry?
August 20th? Is that early enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Take care of that.
Because we would have to bring it up at a council meeting, and our next meeting is the 20th.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, Louise, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Anyone else like to approach and talk to the city council? Okay, well, let's just go right into the regular meeting, then. Are there any, no, there are no written requests. Okay. Are there any council member announcements?
Mr. Mayor, just that we have general government this Wednesday, 4:00 at 4:00 PM. It's a pretty important meeting because we're going to be discussing not only our finance, state of finances with the city, but also looking ahead to our budget for 2019.
Ms. Gonzalez?
I just wanted to commend our police department. I got to go on a ride along last Saturday evening, night, and I just want to commend them on their professionalism and the courtesy that they serve our community with. There wasn't a lot going on that night, but I could tell just by the way that they were conducting, conducting themselves, that they run a great operation. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any others? Mr. Hemrick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The county sponsored a meeting here a week ago about disaster preparedness, where they were coordinating and opening communication channels between the people and organizations that respond to disasters, such as fires, and the agricultural community. And although it's, although within city boundaries, we don't, there are, there are some livestock within our city boundary, it's just a good opportunity to remind everybody to have a disaster plan, think about what are the things that if you had to leave your house with five minutes' notice, what do you grab? Do you grab your mom's cookie jar? Do you grab the cat? What do you grab? And so, that's my announcement.
Was it well attended, the meeting?
It was. There were about thirty or thirty-five people there, a lot of agricultural representatives there from the, from the cattlemen. And they actually have quite a lot of resource and local area knowledge and knowledge of transportation trucks, cow trucks, to be able to move, you know, cattle and livestock during emergencies.
Who would you contact at the county?
That would be Dwayne McFall is, is the person that put the meeting together, but there, I don't recall that they actually have a disaster that's staffed by someone within the county. I don't have that name with them.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do they do any public education for seventy-two hour kits and things like that for residents to consider creating and?
They, they had not. They had not considered that particular aspect of it. This was more high level between the people that have resources to get together and talk about what they have and how to use them in disasters.
All right.
Any other council member?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
You're way over there.
Yeah, I am. I'm out of your vision, I think.
Well.
I wanted to remind everyone that tomorrow night, our police department will be hosting our fifth annual national night out at Red Park, starting at 5:00. And I think they're going to have food and events there for the whole family. So, I'm hoping that people will join us in having a night out in our community.
It's at Red Park, 5:00 to?
5:00 to 7:00.
5:00 to 7:00. Is the chief going to be an adult, then?
Oh, gosh. Let's hope. Is he?
No.
Chief's in the Caribbean.
Oh, that's great.
He escaped that.
That was well planned.
Acting chief will be there.
Okay.
Well, we're talking about scheduling. We should probably put August 16th as well, and that's the US 50 Access Open House. That'll be really important to attend that and see the revisions that have been made on that plan that has had some controversies in it, and hopefully, we've been able to resolve some of those. It'll be important to get input back.
And that's where?
Here at City Hall.
Right in this room?
Right, right here in City Hall. Yep. Lower level.
Sixteenth.
Yep.
Five o'clock.
August 16th, 5:00.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Then we're going to move on to number seven with these recognitions and proclamations. We'd like to recognize the street superintendent and crew members for their outstanding response to the storm that we had, the bad weather condition, and they kept the roads safe and they got them cleaned up. So, do we have, we've got Tony here? Tony Falgin is the, oh, and George is here. We have all these nice signed things here. Would you read the names off? I think that'd be great.
Michael Crowe. Crowe. Derek Holt. Les Hillburn. Carl Hall. Logan Green. Tony Falgin. Dale Crane. Joel, oh, I'm going to miss it, By Miller. Bill Strobel. George Steppleton. Mike Schrader. Mark Mitchell. And Daniel Lambrecht.
Okay. We'd like to get a group picture. Bill Lennox. Of course. He's special.
We'll make sure that happens.
I think it might be just stuck on.
They got stuck together.
There it is.
We have it. We didn't forget him.
We didn't forget.
Tony, did you want to say anything before we have you, invite you up for a picture?
The only thing I'd like to say is I really appreciate this bunch of guys. They went nonstop that Monday night until well after midnight. We started again Tuesday morning at little before 6:00. These guys have been going nonstop constantly, so I think they all deserve a real round of appreciation.
I would like to echo a thank you, just because my home is a beneficiary of your, your hard work and service, as well as many of my friends and family members. And it was a very haunting storm, and it was a daunting cleanup, and we really do appreciate that you went above and beyond and got right to it. It really made a big difference. So, truly, thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Well, we'd like to have you all come up here, and then the council, would you like to stay up here and have the gentleman down in front? And if the newspaper take a picture? We appreciate that. I know you will.
He's got a fancy camera tonight.
Good job.
You can't stand behind you.
Could wipe that lens on that thing?
Malcolm, you're too short.
Guys are going to have to hug each other.
He won't come out.
Good job, guys. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work.
And I have, I think it's an exciting time for a gentleman who has taken care of our town for a very long period of time. I'd like to recognize him and thank him for not pulling me over too often. We'd like to congratulate and recognize Sergeant Zabrowski for forty years of protective and great service for our town. Would you mind coming forward? We have something for you. And Alan, while you put that together, would you like to add a few words?
I need some glue. Want to say some words? That's a lot of coffee. This, I started my law enforcement career with the city of Canyon City as a reserve officer about forty years ago. And Ken Zabrowski was already working at the Canyon City Police Department at that time, and Ken kind of took me under his wing and tried to guide me through those first early stages of law enforcement, because the reality was I had no clue what I was doing. But I learned from his wisdom, and I became a full-time officer in the late eighties, and I've been with the department ever since. And I think Ken is at that point in his career where he's had too many cups of coffee, too many pieces of pie, and now he just wants to do something different. But because of the relationship that we formed during the course of his career, Ken is the only police officer in the city of Canyon City that is allowed to use my first name. So, for forty?
Say what it is.
No. So, for forty years of service, Ken, thank you very much, and thank you for everything. There you go. And I think Kerry's probably going to want to take a picture. Oh, let's get the, go on. You get the couple, too. Yes, Sam. And Robert.
Family shot. Yeah. He is.
Take care, buddy. Take care.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Ken see you at the gorge.
You bet.
Yeah, he's going to go Ranger on it. Okay, I would, everybody back?
I don't have a John.
Well, he doesn't get the vote then, right? If he's not here? Doesn't get the vote. Okay. I would like to move item 8B forward. This is a proclamation designating August the 12th through the 18th as National Healthcare Week. Is Lindsay Sikora and Taylor, or Taylor Jacobs here? Could we have you come forward? Ladies, thank you for coming. I have a proclamation that I signed that I won't, I won't read the whole portion of it, but it's for fifty years. Whereas it were fifty years, the community health centers have provided high-quality, affordable, comprehensive, primary, and preventive healthcare in our nation's underserved communities, delivering value to and having a significant impact on Americans' healthcare system. Ladies, well, thank you. You're with, would you tell us who you're with and?
We're with Valleywide Health Systems.
Both of you? Valleywide. So, I would like to give you this proclamation, and if you'd meet me down front, and maybe we can get a picture as well.
We could send for that.
When you have them talk and give a little bit about what they do so the public knows everything else before we do the picture?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yes. I'm Lindsay Sikora. I'm the Director of Operations with Valleywide Health Systems, and we're here just representing one of over fourteen hundred health centers in the country. So, we really appreciate you guys taking the time to recognize that our community is recognizing our own community in this setting. Valleywide's just one of a handful here in Canyon City. So, you know, we do important work for our citizens. And this is Taylor Jacobs. She's our clinic manager with Valleywide as well.
You can have equal time if you'd like.
That's okay.
Thank you, ladies. It's, we are certainly proud of your organization and all the healthcare providers in our community. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Now, should we try this?
Yes.
Okay, that somewhat concludes the exercise portion of the meeting. We'll do push-ups next, next meeting we'll be doing push-ups. Okay. Call for the adoption of the agenda and the consent agenda. And I ask the city minister to review the agenda and the consent agenda.
Mayor and council, 8A would be approval of the July 16th, 2018 Regular City Council Minutes. 8B is what you just recognized, a proclamation designated August 12th to 18th of 2018 as National Health Center Week. 8C would authorize a declaration of the police department of the, there are about sixty-five lost bikes that have been abandoned, and these bikes will be provided notice in the Canyon City record. Those unclaimed will be distributed to victims of stolen bikes to local nonprofit youth groups, such as the Boys and Girls Club. So, it's a good way to reunite bikes with kids, and the chief was going to provide them locks to make sure this time they didn't disappear. 8D would authorize the city administrator to sign an agreement with the Chamber of Commerce waiving the city's right to repurchase the Peabody House for $1 up until December 15th, 2002. And this is a follow-up to your executive session several months ago to provide for that. 8D would approve a street closure on Bella Lane from Fifth to the cul-de-sac on August 25th, 2018, from 2:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Apparently, it's a neighborhood block party. 8F would authorize the extension of a water tank coating inspection service to SNS Coating Services for the 1 million gallon water storage tank in Dawson Ranch for the price of $48,011, with an option for one more year extension. This is a firm that did our work last year. We only got one bid, and we thought we would save time, and they're holding the same price they provided us last year to do these services. These are very specialized services, and I think because we're a smaller community, we don't attract as many bidders, so we thought it was in our best interest simply to retain the firm that did the work last year, which we're very happy with. 8G would award bid 4218 for the Park Avenue 8-inch water main replacement from South Ninth to South 12th Streets in advance of the 2A Park Avenue Road improvements to avalanche excavation of Canyon City for the total amount of $257,304.30. That does also include our 10% contingency, and we're happy to see it was a competitive bid and even happy to see it was a provider from Canyon City.
Okay. Thank you. And you could show you the list of bills when you're packing, too. Any discussions? Any, Mr. Meisner?
Mayor, council, I'd already talked to, I'd sent an email, but in regards to item A, we had two public hearings, and I just felt it was important that we'd at least not acknowledge in those public hearings that we afforded the, the opportunity to put the public to speak, and there were no comments for both of those public hearings.
Okay. We don't have, do we want to add that to the, just, just prove it was corrected? Okay. Then we entertain a motion approving the consent agenda?
I still have a question.
Mr. Meisner? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. On item F, I noticed that the, the bid was outdated. Are we going to see an updated bid, or can we just do an extension of that?
This effectively would extend last year's bid to this year. I think talking to Bob, given the lack of competition we got last year, we didn't think it was going to increase the competitive environment compared to last year. The firm that did the work last year, he probably did an outstanding job. They're willing to hold the same price they did the work for last year, so that's what we're recommending. If you want to, we could go out for a, for professional service bid on this, but we thought we could save ourselves a couple of months by going this route.
I agree with that, but I, I also would like to see some language or some dates with the extension on there somehow.
Okay. We'll put that on.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And then, another question on C. No, I'm sorry. D. Has the chamber been approached by any potential buyers? Do you know?
I could probably talk to Ryan. I know that there, Ben, people have looked at it. I'm not sure if there's any firm offers, but Ryan might know.
Yeah, I'm unaware of any firm offers, but I believe they've had some interest.
Okay. And has there been a formal appraisal done?
We have not done any appraisal.
No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Meisner?
Back to item F. That agreement, and this is probably more for Cory, that agreement was specifically written as a one-year agreement that would expire upon the completion of the work. So, I'm confused as to how you renew an agreement that's expired. Wouldn't we have to basically do a new agreement?
We can probably do just an addendum. So, an addendum to add a scope for the new year. It's a, it's a pretty simple update, and it's not the type of agreement that requires, under state law, any bidding procedure.
Mr. Meisner?
I recall some kind of conversation, Tony, about those parking spaces in the city lot adjacent to, I guess it's adjacent, but in the, in the city lot that are, that are reserved for the chamber? What would be the status of those if that building is sold?
They would maintain their status as city property. If it were an organization you wish to extend some kind of agreement for parking, you could, but right now, we're assuming that unless it's the chamber, those will revert to just general public use.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Smith?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda and consent agenda for Monday, August 6th, 2018.
As amended.
As amended.
Okay.
Second.
Are there any discussions in that motion? Any, now, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hemrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hacquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Hey, thank you. That's the end of the consent agenda. Have discussion items, number nine is the consideration of business incentive agreement with RBI Incorporated regarding Holiday Inn Express Economic Development Incentives project. This project is located at 3271 East Highway 50, and authorization for the city administrator to sign. This is that incentive agreement. Would you like to start off, Tony, or Ryan?
Going to have Ryan speak to this, but as you know, the number one priority of this community is to generate jobs and economic growth. This is a great opportunity for that. This is probably the largest project the city has seen in at least a decade, a $10 million new hotel Holiday Inn Express. And with that note, I'll turn it over to Ryan to talk about more details about the project, but it's exactly what the council and I think the community has wished for.
Mayor, members of council, you have an updated memo and agreements sitting at your seats. Notice that there was discrepancy there. The Holiday Inn Express will actually be putting in a four-inch water line instead of a three-inch water line. So, the, the incentive for this $10 million project is $193,356, with 100,000 of that coming from use tax from the construction, $83,356 coming from waiving of the four-inch water tap fee, and then a $10,000 rebate towards the building permit fees. And that, that $10,000 is, is not towards the building permit. And that $10,000 is not towards the building permit fees of the hotel itself. It's going towards the apartments project that is being built in conjunction with this, with the hotel. And that, those apartments are going to be used for workforce housing, which we don't have many opportunities like this where we're getting both a business and somebody willing to address workforce housing as well. The project itself is going to employ approximately 25 full-time employees, 19 part-time employees. They'll be generating over $564,000 a year in payroll. They'll generate roughly $70,000 a year in sales tax. That's both the 2% and the 1% road tax. And then if the proposed 5% lodging tax passes, the project will contribute about $116,000 towards that fund as well. So between the two sets of taxes, the sales tax and the lodging tax, this project could potentially generate 186, almost $187,000 in taxes, which is comparable to what all of the downtown businesses in Canyon City produce collectively. So it is a very large project that has a wide-ranging impact for our community and will help us especially during peak tourism season when hotels are running at 90, 95% occupancy by giving us an additional 90 rooms to the room count. I'll take any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
Question.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Mister?
Ms. Gonzalez?
Um, have the bids for the work been dispersed already or released?
No.
No? Okay. Are they, are they really going to try to keep any of this contracted local, the contracting local?
You know, they have a, you know, a contractor that's the project manager. And I believe that they'll try and find local work if possible.
Okay.
But, you know, specifically, it's not written into the agreement.
Okay. And then what is the projected date of completion?
We're expecting them to open about a year after they break ground.
Okay. Thank you.
When are they expected to break ground?
We held a groundbreaking for them on Friday. And they are, they will actually have their construction team here setting up the work site tomorrow. And they're hoping to break ground within the next two weeks.
Okay. And is it possible to project what kind of revenue can be created by those who are staying in the hotel itself?
The additional economic impact of the hotel guests?
Yeah, for the restaurants and the tourism.
Yeah. There are different models. I couldn't do it off the cuff right here.
But as an example, based on state studies, only about 25 cents every dollar that a visitor spends on accommodations. The other 75 cents is for eating, fuel, shopping. So I think we'll see a significant multiplier effect through the community when they capture these guests at this hotel, going out and dining and shopping and fueling up in other parts of the city. So it has a dramatic impact on the rest of the local economy.
I think in addition, we're also sending a message, we're willing to play ball with developers in Canyon City as well.
Yes, absolutely. From an incentive standpoint, we want to incentivize the projects that we want to see, you know, both from a workforce housing and tourism standpoint. These are both very good projects for the community.
Yeah. And it sends also a strong message, you know, Anise and Bina Malkin are true American success stories, having originated from India. She's a CPA, he's a computer scientist, owning already the best western, now the Holiday Inn. They travel in a circle of friends that like to make other investments of a similar kind. So we're hoping that this sends a strong message to that group of people that we're open for business and, you know, bring your business to Canyon City.
Will they be using Colorado Coden Consulting for their?
Yes, yes. The plans have already been submitted to CCC.
Yep. Mr. Hamrick?
Yes, Ryan, just a question. And this is just more for personal information. But it says, your memo says, "This project adds much-needed hotel rooms into the local market." How do we, what, how do we know that? How do we know that we need more motel rooms? Is there a occupancy rate or something that we, that we have or something?
Yeah, there's, there are different agencies that actually go out and look at occupancies. Smith Travel is one of those. I've looked at past Smith Travel reports and, you know, we, we see some of that. But a lot of it is just talking to the hotel owners and, you know, understanding that, you know, their occupancy loads are pretty high. You know, obviously, weekends during the summer are the peak times. But even during the week, during the summer, during that tourist season, we see high occupancy loads. And it's just from, you know, having those conversations with hotel managers, hotel owners.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Any questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt. Number nine, in consideration of business incentive agreement with ABRI Incorporated.
Second.
Made in second. Any discussion on that motion?
And that authorizes this, our vote will authorize the city manager to sign.
Yes. Authorizing city manager, correct. Click. Would you all call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Hey, thank you. Number 10, consideration of business incentive agreement with Confluent Development Starbucks Economic Development Incentive. Project is located at 1303 and 1315 Royal Gorge Boulevard. An authorization for the city administration, administrator to sign. Bless you. And Tony, would you like to, or should we have Ryan? Which one? Ryan?
We'll have Ryan do this. He's a coffee drinker.
All right. Ryan?
I don't know about that. Confluent Development is developing a Starbucks location at 1303 Royal Gorge Boulevard. They have two current water taps on the buildings that they have demolished. They would like to consolidate those two taps into a one-and-a-half inch tap. This consolidation will be $6,651. We are proposing a rebate of not to exceed $3,000 for developments and to offset some of those costs. The rebate will be given to Confluent Development upon the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Again, we have a project here where we're trying to incentivize the development that we want to see, which was the redevelopment of these two sites. And part of this project was to help offset some of those costs to make the numbers work for Confluent Development.
I have a question.
Questions?
So did they request help with it or are we just offering it out of goodwill?
No, this, this was something that came as a direct request. They, they went back to many different partners in the development process asking for concessions.
So I'm wondering why, given how much they're projected to produce in tax revenue the first year, why we didn't just kind of gift them the entire 6,600? It doesn't seem like very much, especially considering how much we're gifting the Holiday Inn Express as kind of a gesture of goodwill to bring more.
Well, in addition to the $3,000 rebate, we're also sharing the cost of a sidewalk, which is another $10,000. So they're very appreciative.
Okay.
The sidewalk program was an administrative program that doesn't come before council. So it, it's in conjunction with an additional incentive.
Okay.
And we're basically going along with what they have asked us.
Yes. That's correct.
The other question I have is this. Are there going to be any, or are the discussions taken care of already ahead of time with regards to CDOT and Highway 50 with regards to this building? Is there going to have to be any change with regards to entrance into there? Because I know they want to have a drive-through to come out.
Yeah. They will be working through the city engineer's office to get their access control permit. So they'll, they'll be going through that process or have gone through that process already.
Okay. Yeah, because we want to get that taken care of before anything comes back. So we don't have, in a sense, kind of what people misunderstood when Jack in the Box was trying to come in here. You know, and they blew that out of proportion. So long as that portion is being taken care of, that's fine.
Yeah, that process is already in the works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I know this is somewhat hypothetical, but there's potentially, there were potentially or was potentially a problem with the access relative to the access from the nearby business. Do we foresee that as being any kind of a DOT problem with those two accesses being that close?
I believe all those details have already been worked out again. It was all worked out through the city engineer's office. And CDOT, of course.
Any questions with council?
I'm just happy to see Highway 50 getting some fresh new looks down there.
Right. Yeah, we've got Dairy Queen and now this. Great. Then I would entertain a motion. Would you like to do that? Ms. Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we authorize consideration of business incentive agreement with Confluent Development for Starbucks.
Second.
Questions were made in second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Having and seeing none, would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hamrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all. Okay, number 11 is consideration of 2018 business plan. This is a mid-year review. And we would put Mr. Harry Patel on the spot at this time. Or should I? Well, I've tried him and then he defers. I'm just trying to get started from the beginning. You know where the money's at.
I was surprised I was not prepared for that one.
Okay, Tony, would you like to?
Just keeping him on his toes, that's good. We won't go into live details because the information's before you. But just as a quick, you know, overview, we're proud to work with the council. It's been progressive and initiated a lot of improvements for the community. The obvious ones, clearly Centennial Park, and we'll be celebrating that later in September. But also from an economic development standpoint, as we spoke to, we think a significant issue is going to be the repurpose of older buildings. One of the major stumbling blocks is meeting fire codes, regulations. So I think our fire safety grant program is going to be a real asset in attracting people. Hopefully, that will be something that the St. Cloud owners will take advantage of and set the tone there. The physical revitalization of the community, we know we can look more attractive. And one way of doing that is the proposed wayfinding program. We recently adopted the monument signs that we hope will be visible within the end of this calendar year. Also, you were committed to our dinos and now they've exploded. We have over 20 of them running around the city and gotten a lot of good feedback on that. Long-term, your commitment to the river corridor zoning district, that's going to be monumental to this community to see from First to Ninth Street be transformed into an active, not only residential retail hotel business corridor for the community and take advantage of that riverfront location rather than having our backs to it. The Four Mile Ranch Economic Development Assistant, I mean, that was somewhat controversial, but we think we've hopefully preserved a major asset out there at Four Mile with that golf course, with that water agreement. And that hopefully in the very near future, the vision of 1,600 homes will materialize and really have a huge economic impact on this community and represent almost a one-third growth in population. Because we all recognize the population of Canyon City really hasn't budged very much over the last several decades. So this would be a real shot in the arm and stimulate economic growth for retailers and businesses throughout the community. Clearly, from the public safety standpoint, I think the biggest accomplishment the council's made is your commitment over $300,000 to our technology upgrades, the mobile data terminals. They're going to be coming online this month. So that'll be a great asset for not only the police, but more importantly, for the public, ensuring safety for this community. The 2A projects, clearly, we made a commitment to the public. If they supported the proposition of adding 1% to our sales tax, we deliver roads. The first set of roads have been completed, gotten good responses. You're going to have two more roads this summer and a whole more bunch of roads next year under our new design bill process. Also, we're continuing to take care of just the routine. You just repaved Four Mile Lane, a half mile of that, and then road resurfacing where that was kind of a hit and miss proposition perhaps in the past. You've made a consistent effort to ensure that we've spent over $400,000 annually in chip and seal work and maintain and ensure the integrity of our existing roads. And then you've also continued to make commitment to listening to the public. We'll, we'll hopefully have the results of the 2018 citizen survey the next couple of weeks. And we know that that drives the council's direction and it really is the basis for all these strategic initiatives. So we appreciate that. Any other questions?
The chip and seal, when does that start?
It would have started actually this week. It will start, I believe, on the 15th.
Does the, consistent seems like rains in the afternoon, delay in any?
Well, it did, but that big storm pushed us back because we had to clean up a lot of streets. But talking to Tony Felgene, it's scheduled to kick off. The firm that we hired last year will do the work this year. They did an outstanding job. So we're looking for mid-August and probably take about a month. They'll do five center lane miles of chip and seal.
Do we have a list of where they are?
The roads? Yeah, we can get that to the council and to the public.
That'd be nice. I think we'd like to have that. Okay. We don't need, do we need a motion to approve that or we just?
We need some discussion.
What? Questions?
We have some questions.
Oh, you have questions? Well, raise your hands. Okay.
I have questions.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Okay. I noticed that the school intersection on 12th and Main is postponed indefinitely. Why?
Because the council had second thoughts about the design of that intersection. So we're going to actually bring up some different design concepts for you next week at the downtown meeting. So hopefully, that will trigger a renaissance of thought into how we want to design those intersections. And once the council's made a determination what design is most appropriate for not only downtown but 12th and Main, that work can be put back on the schedule. Though it did include federal funds, so we may have to get back in line. It may take a few years to get those grant dollars back.
Okay. And then completion of fields? Where we at with that? Or starting fields?
Yeah, the bids will go out this month and you should be awarding that contract at the September 4 meeting to get the 2A.
So the work will be completed when school's in session?
Yeah, unfortunately. Yeah.
Okay. That's unfortunate. Okay. And then just one little thing.
Sure.
Because we're talking about aesthetics, can we get the weeds cut down along Highway 50 between the highway and the Frontage Road? They're really bad by Burger King. They're really bad the whole way down.
Yeah, given, given the recent rains we've received, everyone's choking on excessive weed. So we'll get on that, both for city property, but also working with the public. And we understand why people couldn't get to it at higher priorities this last two weeks. But now that things are drying out, we'll attack it.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Tony, I have a few questions as well. On the citizen survey and the polling they did for specific questions that we're looking ahead to in the future.
Yes.
Can we get possibly some of those polling results as we consider our budget priorities for 2019 on Wednesday? I think that would be important in gauging some of the decisions.
I'll double-check whether it'll be done. That's going to be very close to when they're going to have the whole survey results, but I'll double-check with them tomorrow.
If we at least get those few questions, that would be really helpful.
Okay.
I do have a question on economic development. On our fire safety grant program, we've had that for a little while. We've had no takers. Is there anything that needs, is this just something we're going to keep on the table for future renovations? Or is that something that we need to?
Well, we're going to budget for it and hope that people do take advantage of it. We thought that the theater party would take an interest in it. Unfortunately, they, they had a change in mind because it was too late. They believed in the year to program the theater for what they wanted to do. But I'll guarantee at St. Cloud, we'll meet with them on August 15. We'll make them aware of the opportunity. I'm sure they'll seize that opportunity.
Can I interject? Dina, is that something that's in the Business 101? Is that introduced in the Business 101 class that, that's?
Definitely.
Okay. Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Yeah, Ryan's our spokesperson on that to make people aware. Anyone interested in historical building, that's the first thing we bring up, if that opportunity exists.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah.
Also, under evaluating mechanisms for revitalizing downtown, we talked about how we're going to be adopting a certified local government.
Yes.
It also mentioned an urban renewal authority. Is that something that's on our timeline for consideration?
Yeah, in fact, something that we really want to hear feedback from the council on Wednesday when we talk about the downtown holistically. But clearly, the organization of downtown is a critical component of driving improvements to the downtown. of downtown is a critical component of driving improvements to the downtown. So currently they're under the umbrella of the chamber. We think there's other opportunities that can be taken advantage of that we want the council to hopefully give us some direction on so we can continue to see downtown really become a full-service downtown. I think we're seeing some evidence of that, you know, with Bikes and Brews and Tom's new building and Michael's is now going to be operational. So incrementally, we're seeing some traction. We hope that we can accelerate that.
Okay. And under number two, on reexamining the city's building zoning and land use regulations to facilitate a transparent, predictable, fair and balanced regulatory environment, I would just like to put a little plug in there, especially when we've had a lot of conversations about inspections and things like that, that says that this is ongoing, but I want to make sure we put an extra shot in that particular department because there's some areas I think we could continue to improve.
Yeah, and one of the things talking to Councilmember Meisner about which we're going to be offering and showcase at our, these little 101 business sessions is that we want the public to know that they have the opportunity and the choice to utilize our staff for building plan reviews and inspections or Callahan Code consultants. So we want to make that crystal clear. They have a choice. A lot of people are already choosing Callahan Code consultants for commercial building plan review. Now, I don't think anyone today is taking advantage of their inspection services, but if there's any question that people can use that, we will make it loud and clear. They can and we encourage that so that people have a choice in this process.
Absolutely, and I think that's a great step forward, but I'd like to see more steps taken.
Okay.
Under infrastructure, where are we at with the US-50 pedestrian safety crossing project?
Well, talking to Adam, it's kind of still in the CDOT's court. We're hoping to get some kind of direction hopefully by the fall and have a discussion with the council because we've tentatively put some money in the prospective 2019 budget, but it's been almost, we talked about this really almost last summer, and so they should be able to produce a plan for your consideration by the fall. So I'll follow up with Adam about that.
Okay. And which alley is getting reconstructed this year?
This year, I thought we were doing Sixth. I'll double check on that. I don't know what the schedule is. Adam has that for 2019, but I'll get you that information.
Okay, and my last comment is we have commitment for trail building and expansion on 16 and 21. And in the recent huge storm that we had, I know South Canyon Trails got hammered pretty bad. I was curious if there's been an analysis on how our trails fared through the storms and if there'll be remediation required.
Yeah, the Royal Gorge Trails tended to hold up a little bit better. I have been reaching out to the BLM and the Rec District to assist them. They were really charged with the South Canyon Trails, especially if you know Redemption and, you know, Hard Times, Great Escape. Those got hammered and we've offered to bring Steve down from the Royal Gorge to really work on those because I think it's more than just handwork. It require his machinery and his expertise, so we'll be following up with them. But we've offered that last week, so, because I've walked and biked those trails, they need some TLC.
Yeah, they definitely do. And I know that the HOA also is hoping to hire Steve for, is that going to still?
Dawes and Rans Trails really got hammered.
Trails that they already remediated or are?
So yeah, that would be the second priority because unfortunately, as you well know, they were very pristine and were looking great up to two weeks ago and then they got hammered.
Well, they did say that the trails that Steve already did fix and made it a little bit better and self-sustaining, that they fared okay, pretty well, but the trails that didn't are completely annihilated.
Yeah.
So his work really does make a really big difference.
We'll prioritize them, but I agree with you. Both those areas will be addressed.
We can keep him on the schedule for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
And a follow-up on that. We've got our city parks that have roads through them, the dirt roads. Have you also evaluated those roads and how they fared in this last, in this last storm and where would they fall in the priority list?
Well, they're not in good shape. They weren't in good shape prior to the storm. Clearly, they're in worse shape after the storm. I mean, it would be comparable to Third World Road.
Yeah, I've driven both of them and they're really bad.
They're very, very bad. Now, again, part of our discussions with the council on Wednesday is making a commitment to upgrade those roads. They'll never be as good as city roads, but we need to make them usable and passable and functional, which right now they're really not. So especially Temple Canyon and Red Canyon Park roads need a major investment.
So those are on consideration for 2019?
Yeah, glad you brought that up.
Any questions? Ms. Meisner?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 19 on, 18 on the kiosk says that it's going to be done by the end of July. Did I miss something?
Thank you.
Or is it a?
Yeah, I need to, that's again, the responsibility. We've done our work, the landscaping, but that was a project that CDOT had contracted out to the city of Trinidad to produce those kiosses. There was a problem last year. They couldn't get them done. They were supposed to have them done by the end of July. Clearly, they haven't. Let me follow up and find out where they're at. Hopefully, they'll be out there very soon because it's been a long delay.
Ms. Meisner?
My other concern that I would at least advise with council is at some point, we're going to have to stop building trails and start maintaining. And I know that's a challenge, but I question whether all of our trail systems are being adequately maintained, and I don't mean that negatively.
Sure.
Just from a budgetary standpoint that.
Well, I think on a day-to-day basis, South Canyon Trails, Royal Gorge Trails really were in very good shape up until two weeks ago and that storm just devastated significant sections of both those systems, so we'll have to make a concerted effort to clean that up. But we have, again, in the 2019 budget, resources committed for trail maintenance, so we agree with you.
Yeah, I think that'll be important conversation on Wednesday.
I can't find it now, but I thought that there was a mention in here about Main Street And I questioned whether that involved the curb project or the corner project or what intersection project.
I thought I saw that on our Wednesday for 2019.
Is that on Wednesday?
Yes, for Wednesday, yeah.
Okay, strike that.
That'll be another important conversation to have.
Yeah, hopefully whatever prototype you select relative to downtown is also a prototype that you could use for 12th and Main and any other future projects. So we look forward to that discussion.
Anyone else?
I think Turner.
Ms. Turner?
I did have a couple of questions. We talked about economic development and the Four Mile property. Correct me if I'm wrong, was there a deadline August 1st to have those spec home plans submitted?
To receive building permits for two residential structures, yes.
And have they met that deadline?
Technically, no. I've had discussions with them. They have almost completed the architectural plans for those and they're supposed to be submitting them the next week, so they're 10 days, two weeks late.
Okay. Let's see here. The wayfinding signs. I know we've all agreed on what they're going to look like now. It says we're going to start soliciting bids for fabrication. Have we started that process?
The consultants that we retained are working on the details of the bid documents and they should be done by, I think, the third week of September and then that would go out to fabricators and hopefully we'll have an idea of who's going to do the work for us by end of October and hopefully installation the last two months of this year. Because I know we're all excited about finally seeing those improvements.
They're dinosaur signs.
They are not dinosaur signs. We've discussed this at length. The library parking lot repavement, I know that's really important because it's awful.
Yeah.
Are we planning on waiting until Valleywide is done with their construction before we do that?
No, because that construction goes into the spring, so that's on the same list that Adam, usually I think it's scheduled for August, that's when he does the alleys. Is that the same time?
Okay.
But I'll get you.
Yeah, that alleyway that leads to that parking lot is also just red.
Yeah, I'll get you the final dates on that.
Okay.
Ms. Kess?
Yeah, going along with the question.
All right. Go ahead, finish up.
Do you have a follow-up to that, though? I just have something else on a different topic.
Okay, follow-up on the question you asked with the Four Mile Ranch. I would like to have you, when you talk to them, I would like to see something completed from them either backing away or getting that permit by our August the 20th council meeting. You know, that gives them another two weeks. We've given them over a year to get just the permits. Now, we're going to give them two weeks. I'd like to have something from them by our August the 20th meeting.
Okay. I apologize, Ms. Turner. I didn't mean to take away from you. Go ahead. Thank you, Frank.
Looking at staffing for the finance department, I see that we've got some real problems there if we don't have a plan for how we're going to staff once we have some folks retire. Have we talked about how we're going to address that or, you know, I see that we're raising the issue, but what is our plan to prepare for those staffing issues?
Yeah, we have, we've raised this with the council and a succession plan. You know, Harry can go into greater details, but the first step, I mean, as great as Harry is, we know that he can't live for infinity and so we're clearly planning in the next couple of years, having to groom someone to step up and fill those big shoes. It's also some other turnover. Our chief accountant is retiring as of January. There's several other employees either going out for medical reasons that we're going to have to scramble and address those issues, but if we want to, we can bring you back a memo, kind of laying out the details for that. We're currently in recruitment for deputy finance director, someone that would take on both the chief accountant's role but also be coached and mentored by Harry over the next two years, really step up and take his role. That's our intent with that position.
Yeah, I think that would be great if we could get some more information. That was part of my worry is how imminent is it and I don't want us to be waiting until the last minute to make a plan, so.
Well, we'll get you those details.
Thank you. That is all my questions, Mr. Mayor.
I'm so sorry, thank you.
No, it's okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Do we need a motion on this or do we acknowledge that we received that?
Just acknowledge, but.
Just acknowledge.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay? Everybody okay with that? We'll just acknowledge that we have received it and we have. Okay, thank you.
Good job, Ryan.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Patel, for deferring to Tony. Okay, let's move on to number 12. It's a consideration of principles of conduct for city council members and adoption by title. Could, we should have a discussion on that. Has the city administrator discussed that at this time?
You should recall in your April retreat, there was some discussion around coming up with a more robust and succinct policy. The issue wasn't so much speakers, it was perhaps audience participation at some of the meetings is to, again, underscore the fact this is a public forum. Civility, decorum are critical in doing the public's business. It should not create a carnival-like atmosphere despite sometimes the passions of issues. The people have to respect the process and decorum to be fair and equitable to everyone. So we looked at a series of different policies and practices by other cities and based upon that came up with this said. And Corey also reviewed it. Corey clearly has significant experience working for a multitude of other cities, so it's kind of the collection of best practices from other communities and really, again, speaks less about trying to govern the behavior of speakers as much as governing the behavior of the staff, the council, and particularly, audience members during discussions. That seemed to be the most concerted issue.
Okay. Any questions from council? Ms. Meisner?
Well, to start with on, I'm going to go to the Resolution 9, page 1. Maybe Corey can help, but that whole outline seems odd to me from a standpoint of it goes, that last sentence says matter of interest or concern to citizens except the following colon, which I would then take that all of those things below that colon are except.
I'm not following where you are.
Page 1?
Section 1.
Of the resolution.
Okay.
You see where it says citizens except the following colon? In other words, they can comment on everything except this?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, doesn't everything below that follow that colon the way that that's configured?
That's under the general public comment portion of the meeting and then the items that are below are more specific. The idea is that you're building a record, so for example, if you had a liquor license hearing, you would not want to have people speaking during the general public comment. You want them to be speaking during the liquor license hearing, which would be an item the city council would consider later as a specific item.
I need to clarify that that would be under general public comment? That'd be helpful.
It says during public comment, segment of each meeting.
Right, so that's the beginning portion of the meeting, the general public comment. You can speak on anything except items that are then on the agenda later for which.
Right, but then it continues on that it goes 1, 2, 3, and then it goes A. And by my outline format, that A would be under that main paragraph. Is that not?
That's a structural comment.
Oh, it is. I see what you mean, so it should be.
Which means you couldn't comment.
I'm sorry, I approve this as a form and I appreciate that, but the structural piece about whether it's an A or, I mean, I think the idea is that once you're on an agenda item, A, B, C, D, and E apply. Perhaps we just need a. I mean, if you, if you would, if you would like to have A, B during the public comment, you could certainly do that. And then B, B comment on agenda items. If that, if that's council's preference, you could certainly do that. I, again.
I remember saying more just because it's a lowercase a, it makes it seem like it's sub-subject of 1, 2, and 3 above it.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking for help on.
Maybe distinct as being.
Perhaps a suggestion?
Yeah, that's what I see, but.
Yeah.
Corey, maybe, maybe this might help. Rather than have them, having those three particular paragraphs labeled 1, 2, and 3, maybe I, II, and III to pull it in further.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not the author of this document, so I don't know who put it together. Okay. And I'm, again, whatever makes sense to council in terms of the structure. I mean, if, I think where the A is indented frankly, it shows that it's not a subsection of 3 because it's indented outward, not inward, but that's council's preference.
I concur, but that would mean that it's a subset of that paragraph above it.
So it'd be a capital A.
I don't care what it is, but it's under the exception rule.
Yeah.
Right?
Right.
I know. I think the first paragraph ought to be A and the second one would be B and go on from there. It would make more sense, I think, to me structurally.
The other sections are lettered that way, so if we wanted to be even internally consistent, that would clarify.
I like that.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Right.
And then, and then I thought we had a brief discussion about that we would limit three minutes, but that if council had questioned the person at the podium, that they would have a halftime of rebuttal? Or no? Or is that up to the discretion of our honorable mayor?
Well, I think in there frankly, the mayor should be mentioned as the controller or the control E.
It does.
It does. And so therefore, that would be up to my discretion.
Presiding officer.
I would be, I think specifically should say mayor.
Can I say something to that?
But it does say that somewhere.
I thought we were doing, if two people were presenting, we were giving them five minutes. Or if two people were speaking, we were going to allow them five minutes. Am I incorrect in that?
No. We talked about a group, that you were three minutes, but if you had a group of people, you could select a representative.
To speak for five.
To speak for five minutes for the group.
Is that outlined in here?
I think that's in section C there where we do give the mayor discretion to allow that, depending on the size of the group and the number of people that want to speak.
Right.
C on page 2.
The presiding officer.
I'd like to see the mayor's name in there someplace.
The honorable and great Preston Trump.
With or without quotes.
The presiding officer, I think the public thinks mayor.
Preston officer.[1759.04]
Why don't you say mayor? Well, I mean, I don't get a vote, give me something.
Mayor and/or presiding officer.
Honorable Preston.
Mayor, mayor, pray now.
Sometimes you're on vacation. Yell us.
Mayor, or mayor, pray now. I'm not going to debate this, okay?
Got a question down here.
My question is, because we had two people here a while back that created my question, maybe, or maybe not. And we go to page three, section three, B. It says, "The mayor will serve as the presiding officer at all city council meetings. In his or her absence, the mayor pro tem will serve as the presiding officer." And we had a couple of people that threw a monkey wrench into that, where we didn't have either one of them yet.
Yeah.
Do we need to put anything in there, or just go like we did the last time?
I think you can go like you did last time.
You always have.
Well, I think we just cancel one of the vacations.
Yeah, we had to, we had to go to the bullpen and get Jim one meeting.
I think we're devolving, you will always have.
Kind of like the Rockies bullpen.
You will always have a mayor pro tem. Before I left, and knowing Ms. Smith was not there, I appointed a mayor pro tem.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
If somebody is not following these, then what? They get kicked out, or?
The presiding, the mayor or the mayor pro tem.
Is it enforceable at all?
Yes, it is. It's enforce, and I will enforce it. And I think the mayor pro tem, I will either remove him from the building or have him sit down.
Okay.
And mayor, if I, if I could answer that a little more, because the part of, certainly in the metro area, there have been a number of municipalities that have been sued for kicking people out of meetings because they didn't have these rules. So these rules actually create the guidelines to do it. And you'll notice that one of the things that I looked for was that it's not content-based. So you're never regulating the message, you're regulating the conduct of the speaker.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So do we?
So the conduct of the speaker isn't protected under First Amendment rights?
Correct. They have to follow the rules. You can't say you can speak about X and not Y. You can limit, for example, that if it's public comment, it can be a matter of public interest or community interest, not something further on the agenda. But no, if someone is disrupting the meeting, and disrupting the meeting means not following rules that have been adopted by council, then on that basis, you can't.
So the first 15 minutes, if we have people up, they can talk virtually about anything, unless, and I tell them, you can, unless it's something that's on the agenda, you will have to talk specifically for that.
Precisely.
And then I try to keep them in that category, and I'll waiver from it.
Exactly.
And that's, that's what our rules say.
Correct.
And we have rules, okay? That's protection. Yes.
Do we need an enforcement clause, like somebody has just asked?
No, not at all, because the idea is, if you have, for example, a disruptive crowd, frankly, no one up on the dais is going to be able to, at the end of the day, enforce it. The mayor can attempt to keep order, but this gives your ability to, law enforcement, if necessary, to basically take action or remove people for violation of these rules. So that's your enforcement, if the mayor's power doesn't work.
Okay, let's move on. Any other questions or comments, Ms. Turner?
So I want to go back to the Principles of Conduct document, which is right before the resolution, our packet. The beginning sentence sounds like this should apply to council and to staff, but then later on, in the, in the paragraph, it kind of just refers to city council members. And I'd like it to be clear that this code of conduct is going to apply to all staff in the city and not just council members. So if we could amend language to reflect that.
My suggestion is that you direct your city administrator work on putting that in the employee handbook or some document like that. This is intended to address conduct. The city administrator under our former government is responsible for making this apply, if you will, to all its, all of the employees, and so that's the mechanism to do so.
So would, would you suggest we amend the introductory sentence, then?
No, I think it's.
Because it's kind of contradictory.
The last sentence, I think, covers that, I think, in that paragraph.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I mean, it is the manager's or the administrator's responsibility to identify that these principles apply to his employees, but the document itself only applies to council members. And then I think Tony is hearing you loud and clear to make sure that this applies to his staff as well.
Yeah, I think that's the public's expectation, too, is that if we're going to hold council to a code of conduct, we expect our staff members to carry that through to the public as well.
Okay.
But now I'm confused, I'm sorry. This applies during city council meetings. The city administrator, through the appropriate modification of handbooks and different materials, can apply it to staff. We, as council, apply it to ourselves, and we will apply it to the public.
Yes.
And so I would suggest, then, that the title, Principles of Conduct for the City of Canyon City Council Members, that we add, and the public after that, because this is something, it's not just conduct for us, it's conduct within the meeting.
Also in the title, it'd probably be council members, staff, and public.
Do you want to bring this up for motion, or do you want to put it aside until we get the changes made?
Clean it up and bring it back to August 20th?
I have a question, too.
Mr. Meisner?
Well, on page three, Code of Conduct to Business, we make no mention of our, our two committee-type meetings, and those meetings are very similar in this format. Should we not at least?
Our little citizen committees?
Include that in some of this language, or provide a separate section on those committee meetings that essentially follow many of these same guidelines?
Pretending to General Government and Vision Committee?
Right. Where we take public comment and? Or no?
Well, they're not quite.
I mean, they're less formal.
Yeah, they're not quite as formal, but it would be nice to have some guidelines to go along with that.
This isn't designed to create some formality, it's designed to minimize chaos.
Yeah. Yeah, if the topic is controversial, it could, it could turn.
Which we've had.
Yes.
And my tenure. Mr. Brown's tenure.
I think we're actually getting along in this. Why don't we go ahead and ask, and put it aside, if we can do that, and add those changes, and then bring it back and get it to you prior to the next meeting, so you can look at it again and see if you're happy with it. What's that?
Do we need a movement to?
Motion?
A motion to move it to August 20th?
No.
No, I think we can just move.
You got your direction.
Yeah, we have a direction, so, okay. All right. Okay, let's go on to number 13, which is a consideration of amendment to the municipal code concerning hearings, notices, and assessment and denial of refunds. Should we have Tony or Mr. Patel? Tony?
I will punt this to Harry. He's been so quiet all night, it's time for him to earn his.
I tried earlier, and he punted back to you. Mr. Patel?
Actually, due to the Supreme Court decision with the town of Parker, there was a requirement that this is a statewide issue, and all the provisions should be the same for the, all the government entities. So this code, we haven't updated in our procedural municipal code that requires to have this update necessary for us. So there are three sections, we are making request under this ordinance to make a change. Section number 3.12370, that refers to request for hearing for both of notice of assessment and the denial of refunds has been extended for 30 days. So, for example, if we have issued a notice of assessment or denial of refunds from the taxpayer, they have 30 days to appeal, to have a hearing. And then this next section, 3.12380, that requires for me to have a hearing conducted for, for their subject matter, within the timeline, what we have addressed in the, in the ordinance. And then the section number 312, 190, 390, that appeals requires that if my decision is not agreeable to the taxpayer, then they can appeal to the Department of Revenues instead of going to the court. And that's what the changes are in these amendments. For more detail, I would refer to the city attorney, because he has drafted these amendments for us.
And I think the easiest way to explain this is that while a lot of sales tax issues are matters of local concern, the Colorado Supreme Court in 2010 said that the procedures related to the remedies of the taxpayers are matters of statewide concern, meaning it has to be uniform statewide. So these changes make our code consistent with state law on the procedures for someone that is appealing a sales tax determination.
Ms. Turner?
Did you say this case was decided in 2010?
It is, it was.
And we're just now making the change?
Yeah, our code was 1991, and we discovered this issue, and shortly after taking over a city attorney and identified it.
I mean, I wonder, then, when we cite the case in the, in the ordinance, if we should give the case citation? Or will it be clear enough just to have the party names? I would have assumed the case was decided more recently than that.
Frankly, the whereas clauses don't become part of the ordinance.
Okay.
They are only the legislative findings, so that they will not be codified.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Just, Harry, how many, do you have a lot of hearings, or none?
So far, we have two, three times I had in the previous, you know, and not too, not too frequently, but we have recently, couple of taxpayers, they're now ignoring our, our assessments, and we have to follow up with them.
Okay.
After these amendments.
Okay. Any questions again, council? None, entertain a motion? Ms. Turner?
I move that we adopt ordinance 19, series of 2018, with the amendments to sections 3.12.370, and 3.12.380, and 3.12.390.
Second?
Thank you. Any discussions on that motion? Are there none, or would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Emrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hakeses?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I, I know Rob Brown is sitting in the audience, and I think probably the next with the item 14, I'd like to move to 15, and then we'll go back to 14, because I think his issue probably would be easier and quicker to discuss. So would you mind moving on to, we'll come back to 14, but let's do 15, so maybe Mr. Brown could get home early. This is a consideration proposed ballot issue regarding high-speed internet services. It's an opt-out agreement for Senate Bill 152, and Rob, would you enlighten us on that, please?
Sure. Rob Brown, FEDC Fremont Economic Development Corporation, in case you're unaware, we're a private not-for-profit. We exist for the purpose of economic development, job creation. We work frequently in concert with the City of Canyon City on those types of initiatives. In this particular instance, Senate Bill 152 became law in 2005, and it basically prohibited local governments from being able to get involved in broadband and other types of infrastructure being placed into their communities. And the logic at that point in time was that the Senate believed that by prohibiting local governments from doing that, it would incent private companies from going into areas, especially rural Colorado, in providing those high-speed broadband services. Frankly, a lot of water is under the bridge, and that proved not to be correct. So about two-thirds of the state, 60% of the counties in the state have already opted out of Senate Bill 152, indicating that they would, in fact, like the opportunity to provide broadband services and other types of similar products into their community. And an example is Custer County, where they were able to opt out, and then they went to DOLA, and they were able to, to secure $1.1 million to put up four towers in their area. Now, they own the towers, and they have the ability, then, to lease those towers out to private providers. So it creates, or removes, the obstacle, if you will, for a private-public partnership, where the government owns those towers, but the private provider, who could have never afforded or economically justified those towers, is able to make use of a city or county-owned facility in that particular case. So the, the county, Fremont County, and Florence, City of Florence, have both agreed to put the opt-out provision on the ballot, and having Canyon City as the county seat and the clear population leader in the area, having them do the same thing, I think, would assure our ability to get this particular situation resolved.
Thank you, Rob. Mr. Ryan, would you have any comments?
I just, I think from an economic development standpoint, and broadband is becoming increasingly more and more important, both from a business standpoint, from a healthcare standpoint, and just the, the ability to have the option to participate and put public dollars towards these projects is important. We don't necessarily need to run a, you know, service in the future, but to have the ability and to have that option is extremely important, and I would appreciate council's consideration on this measure.
Any question?
I just wanted some clarification, because I was kind of under the impression, in speaking with Tony, that this is going to be kind of like the city making their Wi-Fi public for people in the area to use, but in reading the, I assume these are like newspaper articles attached in here, it sounds like the cities are creating their own utilities? So is that what we're discussing? I mean, those are two very different things.
Again, it's to have the option, it's to be able to have that option. I think Cory might, might want to talk a little bit more about that.
I mean, I think the answer to your question is yes. And what I mean by that is that if you were to look at the specific provisions of the 2005 legislation, it could be construed that if the city offered Wi-Fi to its citizens, it was violating that. Now, that is a very technical construction, but this would take that issue off the table altogether. It also gives the city all the flexibility in the world to do some sort of broadband, either by itself, with partners, or do nothing. But absent this authorization, we clearly can't do anything.
One other point I'd like to make is that, you know, the franchise agreement for charter communications expires at the end of 2020. Again, this, this could be another point of leverage for the city as well.
This is really giving you an option, it's clearing an obstacle, it's not compelling you to do anything differently than you're doing now. And with the, with the recent passing of the, the new school situation last fall, then you're going to have a student, 800 devices, you know, that are going to be used by local students. And to the city attorney's point, that, that ability to do that is technically in violation of the rules. So there's a lot of reasons to do this, but I think from city council's perspective, the biggest and best reason is that it's opening up and clearing the way for other partnerships to, to begin. We are clearly disadvantaged as a community in rural Colorado when it comes to competing for job opportunities and projects because of the leverage that the larger, larger population areas have, City of Denver, six counties surrounding Denver. You know, they win all of those, because they just, we just don't have the same tools to compete.
I guess I have a question, sorry. So I understand that we're just creating an opportunity for, have these options for future development or for expansion of broadband. But in the language itself, and Cory, maybe you can address that, the language itself, it, I mean, if a regular person were just going to read it, it sounds like, shall Canyon City be permitted to do, you know?
Be authorized.
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 So it could give the impression that we're, we're going to be creating a public utility? Is there any way that we, for education, that we can?
This is absolutely the type of question that I think a lot of education, factual information is important. I mean, one of the conversations I had with both Tony and with Ryan is, this came upon, came up very quickly. Tony asked the question about it, and then I found out about a week later that the desire was through FEDC to put this thing on the ballot. It's happened quickly, so there is an education component to be, to tell folks what they're voting on, which is simply the option to have this available. That's really what this is about. And so I, I think that there is, the public outreach is important.
Yeah, I think, Rob, you might want to talk a little bit about the outreach that FEDC or you might be trying to organize.
Yeah, I think a very, very valid point, and the ballot initiative itself will have to be cleverly crafted in order to say it the appropriate way, so that message is communicated through what the voter will actually be voting on. The Colorado Municipal League has already created many, many of these examples that we can choose from as a community, and just like any other initiative, and two A-
we can choose from as a community, and just like any other initiative, and 2A comes immediately to mind, there will have to be a significant program put together. FEDC's role is strictly to spearhead it, to meet in front of the community governments and get this started, and then we'll form after the fact, once everybody's on the same page and we're moving forward as a community, we'll form a PAC, we'll put the necessary resources behind it, and go get the public educated and get an affirmative vote.
Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you.
You bet.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Well, my question is kind of along the same lines. So this language is, has been approved by Fremont County as well as Florence, City of Florence.
That's a good question. All your questions are good, by the way. That was just particularly good, because it was timely. In this particular situation, they've each approved their own measure, so they will be worded slightly differently, but your choice is what you see in this particular document on your agenda. So this is Canyon City's choice, but all of them are very similar and, you know, have the same intended goal. But I think there's some effort there that we can work together, you know, as a coalition and, you know, and create common language, but none of the ballot language has been completed yet, but the institutions have agreed to pursue it. That's what we've got so far.
Okay, so we could network with?
Absolutely.
The whole community to educate all of Fremont County?
Yeah, we have some great examples, you know, of collaboration between the entities, and although it's always difficult, this is the type of thing that, you know, is not as polarizing as something we should be able to get done easily.
It's very confusing, reading it as, as a, just a regular person.
Layman, yeah, absolutely.
Layman's terms.
And this is, this is broad-form CML language, and part of the reason for the broad form is because we don't know what the deal is going to look like. So we want to give flexibility. It may be a public-private partnership, it may be a public-public partnership, and so this is the, gives the most flexibility of all the questions, and this is sort of that broad-form question to provide the most flexibility for the city.
Speaking to the timing, this issue did come up very quickly, and so we've tried to mobilize and get the necessary support, and in this particular instance, as robust of an agenda as you have tonight, and you have had in recent nights, this was our first opportunity to get here to address the group, so we thank you for that, even being willing to listen, and I think it is still a good effort on our part to get it done, but we've got a lot of work to do after the fact as well.
I just have one question out of curiosity. I'm sorry.
You go right ahead.
What is the typical cost of a tower?
Boy, I'm completely unqualified to answer that, but I know that Custer got $1.1 million and four towers, so in my Canyon City high school math, that's the best I could do for you, $260,000 apiece or something, but yeah, it's significant.
Good rebuttal. Now, are there grants available for this, or is this all taxpayer money?
No, absolutely. Right now, there are no grants available for the City of Canyon City or Fremont County to approach this, but opting out would open the doors to those grants, and that's precisely the objective here, is to generate that necessary momentum, so we can go get that money for you.
So going back to Custer County, they're receiving $1.1 million from DOLA. They're trying to pair that with $1 million in Economic Development Administration grant money as well. So in total, that's about a $2.2 million project.
And how many residents live in Custer County, do you know?
Approximately 4,000, 4,500.
I didn't hear you. I heard Mr. Meisner say, sir, I'm sorry, how much?
Approximately 4,000 to 4,500.
Okay.
Approximately half as many deers as we have in the city limits of Canyon City.
That's right. Okay, so that's, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Meisner?
Well, I mean, are we stuck with this language? Every time we do a ballot, I have the same issue. I mean, this language, to me, I mean, we're talking about opting out of a state statute, but that's not what this statement tells me as a voter, and that's where I have a problem, it looks like, as Councilman Smith has suggested, we're creating something here, and we're not. That's what I read out of this language.
Well, and the first operative sentence is, shall the City of Canyon City be authorized? That is, so without increasing taxes and without limiting its home rule authority, shall the City of Canyon City be authorized to provide high-speed internet? That's the operative language, and then beyond that is directly or indirectly, and then it references the statute. So that's the structure of the question, that's sort of the CML broad-form structure, to give the city the maximum flexibility. Typically, when these questions are done, there is a lot more time at the front end to have the education. I mean, again, this was done very quickly, in terms of being presented to you, not in terms of the ballot question, but in terms of the presentation. So there is a matter of playing catch-up and getting the word out to the voters as to what this really means.
What's your thought on the question, Rob?
Well, my thought is, and I don't understand the specific legality, so I'm no authority on that fact, but I do believe that there's a, there's some word crafting that you may want to do. I think the key point is that you have a decision to make in a certain timeframe in order to get it on the November ballot. So if you back, if you start at the November ballot date and you back up, then I think we have possibly one more council meeting before that final decision has to be made. So what I would, what I would like to see is an affirmative vote, that you are going to proceed with this with language that you approve at a future date, if that's possible.
It's not possible, because they, this is the first reading, there's a second reading at the next meeting, and we expedited it to get it tonight.
So there's your answer.
Second reading, we can amend.
You could, but I'm not sure what, I mean, I'm not sure what the language is, in the sense that.
We're not either.
I mean, I think everyone's seeking broad form and not knowing what the future holds, and so that's why I'm a little bit concerned with trying to craft the language in a way that doesn't give you that broad authority.
So it sounds like what you're saying is that you recommend we go with the language as drafted?
Yeah, and if you want to look at what Florence and the county are doing and amend the language on second reading, so long as it doesn't limit that broad form, you could certainly look at that. But this language is language that has been used by communities across Colorado successfully, but again, I can't emphasize enough that it's not the language that gets the yes vote. It's the outreach as to what they're really voting for, much like a Tabor question, where you look at it and have no idea what it says.
Just to be perfectly clear, I concur with what the city attorney is telling you. I think, as I mentioned, I'm not an expert on the particular process side of it, but the, that is language that I have seen, and I have seen it on the CML documentation, but they also give about 20 other examples, so there are other possibilities that you could look at, but your clock is officially ticking. Now, at the risk of undermining my own effort here tonight, this is not the end of the world if you're not able to come to a conclusion, because you could always do it on the next election cycle. The downside to doing that is that the other entities are going to proceed, and then therefore you would not be, you know, aligned with them, and it could be a more difficult challenge in the future if you're basically going it alone, so to speak. So for that reason, I would encourage you to do it. I would encourage you to take your attorney's advice and use that language, but I would also suggest that each of you look at your packets in the alternate language, and if you want to make a slight modification and get it entered into second reading, that certainly would make sense to me, but again, I'm clearly not the expert on the process, just a citizen interested in our community getting better broadband.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 21, series of 2018.
First reading.
Second?
Second, Ms. Turner? Any discussion of that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammerick?
Aye.
Councilmember Hacquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go back to number 14. This is consideration amendment to the municipal code updating Chapter 8.16, trash disposal enforcement. It's ordinance number 20, series 2018. Tony?
Sure. First, to put this in perspective, we just completed a two-month outreach program to educate the public, both our residents and our businesses, about your new trash ordinance. We had 99.5% voluntary compliance. We did, though, have to cite 34 individuals, and I think talking to Councilmember Meisner, there was a valid concern about sometimes the inability to properly identify who was the offender or violator. Was it the provider of the service, which was in the trash companies, or was it the individual resident or business? I think in talking to Mr. Meisner, we believe this language would be helpful. It's not a godsend as far as curing everything, but again, to put it in perspective, this represents a very, very small portion of the community. Now that we've actually implemented the ordinance, we, and all 34 of the violators came into compliance almost immediately, so we don't envision this being an ongoing problem, but I think for sake of clarity and consistency, this language would be helpful to help identify who the violator is.
Okay. Patrick, would you like to add to that, or this time, or?
No, I was unaware Tony was going to be speaking on this, so he, I think, presented far more eloquently than I could have.
Okay. Eloquent, thank you. Do you have anything else to add to that, or anything?
Only that this tweak, as Tony said, identifies and specifically defines service provider, or the company that's providing the trash hallway service, versus the service holder, essentially the customer of the service, and ultimately, what we're seeking for compliance is the service holder to come into compliance, because ultimately, the service provider is only doing what their customer has asked them to do, and if their customer is asking them to create a violation, we want to make sure it's the customer who knows that's the violation.
Okay.
And I just, I guess I want the council to know, we are not sure this is going to work, frankly, and we have, we've raised that issue. This creates some issues in terms of enforcement with evidentiary issues, in terms of hearsay. Staff has indicated they want to move forward, but we want to make sure that council understands this may not solve the problem.
Ms. Gonzalez?
So, I guess I have a lot to say about this. Going back to why we started this trash ordinance in the beginning, my understanding, it was before I was on council, so my understanding was that it was to improve the aesthetics along Highway 50 as you're coming in through town. And we're kind of off of that. We're not taking baby steps, like we had talked about. We've kind of encompassed the whole city into this, instead of just working it bit by bit, and just looking at the Highway 50 corridor, the downtown, the business district. So I guess that's where my problem with this lies, is, I feel like we're kind of nitpicking at trash, and I'm not okay with that. So.
You know, don't comment on what you said. It did start with the Highway 50 corridor, but then it went beyond that, and even before it came on council, we had numerous meetings where there's talking about the dumpsters on Fifth Street going up and down, we're talking about in alleyways and everything else. So this has been brought up numerous times for various reasons, and so we looked at it, would say, okay, we need to look at it in its totality, okay? And that's kind of where this is the final point of that. So it wasn't just looking at it once, and then we say, okay, we're going to now do this. No, we took into consideration complaints from the people, and Fifth Street was the biggest thing, dumpsters all over the road, alleyways, they're there, and people, neighbors complaining, the rental owners who have this and that. So we've had a lot, a lot of discussion with regards to the trash collection. The biggest problem we had with regards to, and we had all the trash companies come in here, talk about it also, so we beat this to death, okay?
I know.
Well, but I'm just trying to get to the point that, from what you're saying, we're nitpicking, we're not nitpicking, okay? We took into consideration everything that came about before we decided to do something, and there was a reason for it, why we decided to do what we're doing. And this, like the attorney's saying, may not be our last final solution, but we beat this thing to death, you know, and I would hate to see us continue to beat it to death. I'm looking at, let's get this resolved, and then if we have issues that come after the fact with this, then we can look, how do we address that to make a change to them? But folks, we're never going to, if we don't get this ordinance passed, then all the people that have been given citations, and that are going to say, well, why didn't I get it? Okay? It's the best thing that we've decided to come up with. So I think let's quit beating this to death, let's go ahead and get this ordinance taken care of, let's get it through, and then if we have any situations that come out after, then we will deal with it.
And let's beat that dead horse.
Well, this isn't a new ordinance, Frank. This is an amendment to an ordinance that I was queasy about myself, and I think council was too. I mean, that's, you admitted it, we had all this discussion, discussion on it, I'm not sure it was the kind of ordinance we really wanted to begin with, and we got something, and then we got all kinds of crap thrown at us. Excuse me, shouldn't have said that. And so I'm on, I was on from the very beginning, and council was, and yet we passed it.
Can I make a suggestion? I don't know if it's even allowed. Can we scale this back to the business district, to Highway 50, to downtown, see what works? Take it little bits and pieces at a time, and then start working into our community?
Well, this ordinance doesn't have anything to do with that.
I know.
This just has to do with the coordinating with the providers. I think we've done what we've done. It's time for, my personal opinion is if we ultimately got 100% compliance, it seems like we're doing okay. I don't see why we need to add any, be a little bit nitpicky. I don't, why add extra government regulation? Let's just put this to bed and move on.
Well, all this does is amend an already existing ordinance.
Yeah.
And there was something wrong with communication, apparently, because I got an awful lot of complaints about the enforcement of it. And I thought it was just to get out of, I thought it was a very simple thing, to get out of the right of way, and when I get to hear about it from someone else, I'm not happy. And all those numbers, thousands of dollars of tickets and things that were handed out, I think council shouldn't know about, I think mayor shouldn't have known about it. You know, something's coming down the pike bad, and if I have to hear about it from those people, I'm not happy. And that's what happened, and you know that's what happened. So, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question for Cory. Cory, what's the legal difference between what we have now and what's proposed?
The legal difference is you are putting the enforcement mechanism into the ordinance itself, and typically, enforcement is done at the administrative level as opposed to the legislative level. And in this case, at least from our perspective, you can do the same thing, or similar things, on a case-by-case basis through enforcement, without using the language of the ordinance. If you use the language of the ordinance, in some cases, you're going to, you're going to have tickets that aren't provable. If you don't have it in the ordinance, you will know through an enforcement mechanism if you can prove your case before you write the ticket, and you're not bound by the language in the legislation.
So I have a question about this.
Go ahead.
Our trash companies are fully aware of this ordinance?
I don't know what type of notice the city has given, but they are responsible for knowing about it, absolutely.
Okay. Can we make sure that they are notified if, okay?
Are you talking about the change?
I'm just, no, I'm talking about the.
The original version.
Yeah, I think.
Oh, yeah. That was a very significant.
No, the change, if this change is passed, then.
Because essentially, the trash companies are now being held liable if they do not release information, so.
They are both, under the current ordinance, they are jointly and severally liable. What that means is each party, the provider and the recipient of the service, are both liable. And what the city does as a matter of enforcement is it can enforce against essentially whichever one it can prove. It can't always prove who the service provide, who's receiving the service, but it can prove the trash company. And so this is trying to, at least in our view, use the certainty of knowing who the trash service provider is. trash service provider is to get to the consumer. And without getting too far into the weeds, there is Colorado case law that says that if you have a complaint, solely complaint-based mechanism for enforcing an ordinance, that it can be invalidated. It can be held to be totally invalid. In my mind, this comes close to that, and that's one of the concerns we have about putting enforcement mechanisms into the ordinance itself. Your staff still does the enforcement, but you give them more flexibility if it's not in the ordinance itself.
Mr. Meisner?
I'm going to try to be diplomatic with this. That's the problem. This is that, in my opinion, staff are not doing that appropriately. So, the only resource or recourse that I see is to bring this back to this group and rehash it. Tony and I kind of came up, or Tony came up with this concept of... The biggest problem that I'm seeing, aside from who wants to agree or disagree with me, is that I believe staff are not making any kind of diligent effort to contact the people around the container, to find out who the container belongs to. So consequently, they're issuing the citation to the vendor. Now, Tony's going to contradict that, but I'm telling you from what residents tell me, they've never spoken to a city staff member or received information from a city staff member. So, you tell me where the problem is. I don't know, but structurally and procedure-wise, this at least tells me that we're going to have some process that hopefully ensures that staff are just not going after the vendors, which is the easiest apple. That may not be diplomatic, but that's what I'm feeling is happening with, based upon the feedback from multiple residents.
Well, this was an ordinance that we just were not happy with, from the onset, and we did it. Now, there it is. Now, what we're going to do is add another modification. I would like to know, Tony, it says in there you have the right to add as administrator, I got that, that how it's enforced and things of that nature. Was there guidelines issued to those people, and what were they, and could I see them?
Yeah, I think the fact that we got 99.5 percent compliance.
That's okay.
I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill. We had 34...
That's because you're not taking all the phone calls, Tony.
You're not, right. The fact is...
Well, just put this in perspective. We have 8,000 customers, 34 got citations.
Okay.
In those cases, almost inevitably, we couldn't determine who was responsible for the dumpster being in the public right of way. They were in cul-de-sacs, they're on roads. We were working hand-in-hand with the trash companies. One voluntarily took care of the problem. The other one, I'll be honest, for two months played cat and mouse with us. It's very frustrating. Many of the people that you want us to reach out to, they weren't past 5 o'clock unless we want to pay our staff a lot of overtime to chase people down after hours. But we thought simple courtesy of working with the trash company should resolve this matter. It took the threat of citations, and within 24 hours, the matter was remedied.
And that's really the way that we need to do business.
Yeah.
Issue $34,000 in citations to the vendor, back them against the fence.
After two months of discussions, and I provided you the chronology of all the meetings, the emails, even discussions with their attorney. This should not have happened, but I don't blame our staff for this. This was the culmination of a lot of uncooperative business.
That was the vendor's fault.
Well, they had two months to address this. We had multiple meetings and discussions with them, so...
Well, the other fact that I'm trying to get across, and we talked about earlier, I really think someone should have at least communicated with me that there were $34,000 worth of fines out there. I didn't hear anything about it. I think that's bad communication.
We...
Darling.
I'll be honest, unless you want us to tell you who we're citing on a daily basis, whether it's from police to code enforcement, but, you know, we have to take administrative action all the time.
I think it's pure and unusual to have that type of, that big a number, and we don't hear about it. I think that's really unusual.
That is a large number. And what I have to say is, we had asked, or mayor had asked, to slow things down a little bit on this process back in March, June?
Yeah, we delayed enforcement for two months.
So, I was under the impression that if we were going to start citing, that we would be made aware. And I was just taken by surprise at the amount of the citations and the amount of phone calls I got, and...
Well, during a transition, there's always going to be a really...
That's a big transition. That's a big one.
It was, again, 34 accounts out of 8,000.
And it was $34,000. That's a big number. Okay. Shall we move forward, or what do you want to do?
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 20, a series of 2018, an ordinance for the city of Canyon City, Colorado, amending section 8.16.010 and chapter 8.16 by the amendment of a new section 8.16.130 concerning enforcement.
That's for free reading.
On first reading.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Meisner?
My concern would be with item C. My intent is that if the city staff, with all their due diligence, are not able to find out who this dumpster belongs to, that we contact the vendor. And then, the vendor would have some responsibility to provide us with either the name of the renter, or they are subjective to the violation. And once the vendor provides that information, I would then like to see the city proactively and in person, try to get a hold of that customer. That's all I want.
We will.
I don't know how you put that in item C. I don't want them to go out there and give them a violation. I just want somebody to go out there and knock on the door and say, hey, move your dumpster. And most of those people in the 34 violations would have been very happy to move it if somebody from the city would have politely knocked on their door and said, we need to fix the problem out on the street. According to those residents, that never happened.
We got a motion and a second. I call for the vote.
No, I call for the vote. You don't call for it.
Let's get this over with.
Any more discussion?
Let's get it over with. Let's see if they vote for it or vote it down.
I'll handle that. Thank you, Frank. Okay. No more discussion? Call and roll, please.
Councilmember Cochran?
Nay.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Nay.
Councilmember Hammack?
Nay.
Councilmember Hacquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Nay.
Councilmember Smith?
Nay.
Councilmember Turner?
Nay.
Motion fails to carry.
Okay. Thank you. Let's move on to, we react, number 16. Tony, would you like to cover that, please?
Yes, as you're aware, I think it was our memo of May the 21st, we outlined a process to propose the sale of the place annex building on South Ninth. Our first option was to get sealed bids that didn't achieve the monetary amount we were looking for, but our second option was to use a commercial real estate broker, which we retained to list it, and we sold it within several weeks. So, this would validate the sale of that property. We received $463,500. I think net real estate commissions will net about $434,000.
Any questions, anyone?
And just as a note of information, we do respect the city attorney's position on this. Technically, we probably should have had a special meeting, but we felt that since we'd outlined the process to you, we'd kept in communications that we would proceed. But in the future, we'll have, if we need to, we'll have a special meeting to authorize us to execute these real estate sales.
And we're hoping in the future to have our form of contract and not this form of contract.
So, this is acceptable for today?
This agreement was already entered into, so we're a little late. And so, we can't change it. We just have to make sure we comply with it now.
Okay.
I mean, if the person who signed the agreement didn't have the authority to do so, is that...
We are ratifying that authority tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
That is precise, but that's precisely the issue.
Right.
Mr. Meisner? Did you have a question?
No, they answered it.
Okay. I just, for the city attorney, since I do that for a living, what's your angst with the real estate contract that attorneys approve?
For example, municipalities cannot, under the constitution, be subject to specific performance. I mean, that's one example.
It wasn't in there.
No, but there's other things in real estate contracts that municipalities don't, do it a little differently.
Okay. That's a, in 45 years of doing business in real estate, that's always been the debate to attorneys and real estate brokers. Thank you so much. Okay. Any other comments?
I just have one other question. What happens if we don't ratify the contract tonight?
Then you've got some staff members that are hanging out there.
Okay.
Whoa.
No, I mean, that's the real answer.
I mean, I wonder, because some of the emails made it sound like it was kind of council's fault for not having approved this already, and it wasn't on our agenda, so we really couldn't have taken action on something that didn't come before us.
No, and I think that's the concern that Tony identified, is that staff knew that it had direction to move forward, but missed a step.
Okay.
Which was to actually get this in front of you.
Would you call a roll, please? We had a motion. We don't have a motion. Would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Gonzalez?
I make a motion that we approve the sales contract for 604 South Ninth Street. Does that suffice?
On the first reading of the ordinance.
22. I don't have it in front of me.
Okay.
Feed it to me, please. What?
Ordinance 22, series 18.
Oh, ordinance number 22, series of 2018.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second?
Second's turn. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Would you call a roll, please?
Councilmember Cochran?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammack?
Aye.
Councilmember Hacquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, number 17 is administrator's report. Do you have any report, Tony?
Take your time now.
Okay, then, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.